Hello, everybody watching the COVID Town Hall here on Room Now. I'm Jack Kush with roomnow.com. I'm joined by five of my friends, expert panelists who I've asked to join us because they're each different but unique perspectives on practice rheumatology and dealing with this particular pandemic and how it affects us in rheumatology. I'm joined to my left by Dr. Alan Matsumoto from the Arthritis and Rheumatism Group in Maryland. Is that right, Alan?
Yep. Yes, Maryland or Washington.
And then Cassie Calabrese from the Cleveland Clinic on my right. On the bottom row, we have Alvin Wells from the Rheumatology and Immunotherapy Center in Wisconsin, Artie Kavanaugh from University of California, San Diego, Kevin Winthrop from Oregon Health and Science University Center in Portland, Oregon. Thank you for joining us, folks.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, so I wanted to begin with the general format here is we're going to talk a few topics amongst the panelists in the first half of this hour, and then we're going to get to all your questions. If you're going to ask questions, you can ask them using the Q and A button on Zoom. I want to go around and start with Kevin on the bottom and ask my panelists to tell us how the pandemic has affected you. Tell me something good or bad. Kevin?
How much time do we have, Jack? I think my complaint would be the same complaint we all have. It's completely changed our jobs. I now have a second career and I still have my old job. So, you know, everyone is by this. It doesn't matter what profession you're in, but that would be my gut response.
Artie?
Well, I think most things are negative and it's really shaken up our world, but as I wrote yesterday on Room Now, if you look there, a couple of bright things. I think people are nicer to each other. I think there's a shared communality about dealing with this incredibly bad event that we all have to get through, and that's brought out the best in a lot of people.
Alvin?
I tell you, I'm a little worried. I'm 59 years old. I did see one acute patient today. She had a fever and a cough. I put on my space suit and got to see her, but am I going to get this virus? Am I going to be one of the ones that ends up with some crazy outcome? So that is a concern, I think, and all of us have, and that's what our patients are relating to us as well.
Alan?
So, you know, I think that the, again, it's mostly bad at dealing with the near complete shuttering of our clinics and the responsibility of continuing to try to provide care for our patients, keeping our staff safe. And last, how to figure out whether or not we're going to be financially solvent in the months ahead.
Cassie at the Cleveland Clinic, what's worrying you?
Well, everything's very different, very weird. Scared that, you know, when is this going to be over? Is anything ever going to be the same again? Lots of anxiety, lots of fear, this virtual world with our patients. I've had a lot of meaningful conversations with patients about their, you know, anxiety and fears, and also in home life, friends and family, I think everyone's really banding together, you know, people checking on each other, touching base with people I might not have, you know, touched base with in a while. I think everyone's really also taking care of each other in this bad and scary time.
So that's a really important comment, and that would be sort of my initial takeaway is that, boy, there's a lot of people looking to each of us, both on this panel and who are tuning in for answers and for some guidance, and we're not going to have all the answers this week, but we know that we're going to be smarter in two weeks and in two months and whatnot. But I think we need to lead or be led during all of this. Let's start with another question, and maybe Alan Matsumoto, you could address this first. What's the most common question you're getting and how are you responding to it?
I think the biggest question is, is what do I, doc, what do I do about my medications for rheumatoid arthritis? Do I stop methotrexate? Do I stop my biologics? And I think for the most part, I'm encouraging them to continue because of the concern of what a flare would mean in my patients.
Cassie, what's the most common thing you're hearing?
After that question, even something as simple as should I come in for my visit? So a question we get, you know, every day, should I come in? Do we do a virtual? I think everyone across the board is probably doing the same thing, encouraging everyone to stay out of the clinic unless they need an infusion, which I still think is important for patients to keep their scheduled infusions, to prevent disease flares and risk for, you know, need for prednisone and more exposure to the healthcare system. And we're learning that a lot of things can be done over the phone or over a face-to-face visit.
Alvin?
I echo both of those responses. One of the other ones I've seen all the time, say, hey, Dr. Wells, I was on Plaquenil several years ago. I stopped it because it wasn't working. I have a side effect. Do I need to go back on that now? So we're getting that all the time. And for the ones who are on it, am I going to be getting my prescription filled?
Yeah, all of a sudden, the COVID crisis has turned the non-compliant Plaquenil patient into someone who's incredibly compliant overnight.
Exactly.
Yeah. Artie?
The same thing, but I would, I'd say a variant of that, am I immunosuppressed? And that's a deep question. As scleroderma patient who is on no immune modulators, but is she immunosuppressed? She said, should I be working in the hospital as a nurse, as she was? What about someone who's on a therapy but has no systemic inflammation whatsoever? Are they better off? Are they less immunosuppressed if they have absolutely no inflammation and the disease under perfect control, or if they had stopped the therapy and then they're inflamed? I think that's going to get to the discussion of what do we do when we're thinking about treating patients who already have the COVID and have the cytokine storm, for example, but I'm getting that from all the patients. Am I immunosuppressed? And it's not always clear.
Kevin, are you hearing anything different?
Yeah, I hear all those questions. They're all good questions. I think I'm being asked a lot of questions by not just patients, but all those old friends that Cassie mentioned coming out of the woodwork from college and everywhere else saying, two things, when do we know we flatten the curve? When are we going to flatten it? And when we can go back normal? I mean, those are the things I'm being asked daily by people in our profession and outside of profession. And of course, I don't know the answer to those things, but I think my gut is that we're not going to go, things are going to be changed at all in a bad way. Some of these things will be good for the future, but we're not going to go back to normal. We're going to have the social distancing in place for months. I mean, this is not a two weeks, this is probably three or four month deal, and then it may happen again later in the year. I think people just need to be prepared that we need to visualize differently and, you know, kind of change our practices.
So I want to tell the audience that both Kevin and Cassie are infectious disease specialists. Cassie is a rheumatologist and has done an ID fellowship. Kevin is an ID consultant, has worked with the CDC, who seems to do a lot of rheumatology work. Thank God for all of us that we have Kevin as a friend. And so that's one of their main help in being a part of this program. I want our panel to address the issue of what adjustments you've made in your practice and how practice has changed. I assume everyone is doing remote visits, but what are the major adjustments or important adjustments that you've made in your practice? Let's start with Alvin.
Yeah, I mean, this has been a dramatic change. So this is Thursday. By this time, I would have seen 75 or 80 patients. I've only seen two patients actually in the clinic, a uveitis patient on Monday and a vasculitis patient today. That's the one I mentioned that had a fever. We've gone to telephone calls. We've run out of our patients have internet access, so telephone is going to be important, and then doing virtual visits. In the past, I would do about two or three virtual visits a day. Today I had 10. So we're doing those now and just kind of wrapped it up. But also on the staffing side, you know, some of my staff has been furloughed. One of them's now been quarantined because of a cough. She hasn't been screened yet, but so all those different things. And then everybody's all anxious, you know, are they going to get paid? If they get sick, is it workers comp? And all these different things. So still on the staffing side, but also how we day-to-day visits with our patients, virtually telephone calls, and only in a couple of few cases where we really need to be seen, I need to lay hands on them to get them treated. Like the uveitis guy, he got a couple injections before he left the clinic because of the flare.
Artie, what adjustments are you making?
Well, that, I mean, gone to the video visits and the telephones, and sometimes they work, which surprised me. Sometimes they're just not the same. You just cannot get the information you need from a virtual visit. You really need a visit. The other thing that I've started to notice more is, as you know, Kevin said, we were thinking, okay, in a few weeks, we'll be back to normal. So that's when that patient can get a chest CT, and the other patient can get an MRI, and my other patient can get the other aspects of their normal medical care. Everything's been sort of postponed, but you can't postpone everything forever. So I want everything to be back to normal. I just don't know when it's going to be.
Kevin?
Yeah, I agree with Artie totally. And it's funny, Alan, the only patient I saw today was a uveitis patient, TB uveitis. So, I mean, there's certain things that you just gotta, you gotta see. Can't look in the eye virtually. And I think some of these visits, I mean, in my ID clinic, we've gone totally virtual, except for cases like that. And I think that in some parts, this is going to be good. Change practice. We're going to do more things virtually in the future. But I also, I don't want patients to think that a virtual visit is a visit in person because it just isn't. It's not quite as, and I think that's just a sad.
Cassie?
Yeah, I echo all those things, you know, going virtual as much as possible, while still really trying to do right by patients that still need our medical attention. I see a lot of cancer patients who are receiving immunotherapy and develop these immune-related adverse events, and, you know, patients are still getting cancer and receiving those treatments, and they're coming into our cancer center and trying to decide who actually needs to walk over from the cancer center on the day they, you know, were scheduled to come in and see me versus doing it virtually is sometimes a tough decision to make, or also those patients that we've been waiting a while for their musculoskeletal ultrasound that was scheduled for tomorrow. Do you still want me to go get that, or can we postpone that? So sometimes tough to decide what to postpone and what to do virtually. And also being at an academic center, hard to think of sometimes, but trying to keep education alive for our fellows who had their, you know, journal clubs and things scheduled, and doing those virtually every morning has been, has been something interesting, but seems to be working so far.
Dr. Matsumoto?
I think my staff has worked very, very hard at trying to maintain the social distancing of our patients. So patients who come in for laboratory tests come in on a schedule now. They're often asked to wait in their cars before coming into the office. Our infusion suite has spaced out all the chairs as best as possible to make sure that there's appropriate distance. And all patients get calls the night before to ask about symptoms to make sure they're not symptomatic, and again, are asked before they walk into our offices in the patients that we do see. So it really has been an incredible effort on my staff, by my staff to do that.
Alvin?
Yeah, Alan, you brought up something that made me think of a quick comment. I heard one of my colleagues say, so instead of doing the infusion suite now, so now they're using exam rooms as an infusion area. So the patients are actually isolated. So you don't have all the patients coming in. So our colleagues in the line, you can have individual patients in exam rooms to get their treatment as well. So that's why we kind of do isolating.
It's a good idea.
I think we're all practicing differently, and there's a lot of things we're not doing. We're not doing injections. We're not doing things we would otherwise deem as elective. We're holding off on sending patients for imaging unless it's absolutely necessary. I mean, all of our imaging departments have given us directives about that. Anybody else have the "I'm not doing anymore" story? Okay. Well, then let's move on to what I think is, I want each of you to ask a question of your fellow panelists. It can be someone directed question, or it could be just a general question to the group. Artie?
So I'm going to hit Kevin up before everybody else does because I think everybody's asking this. So Plaquenil is the, you know, of course, it's the hottest thing. It works in vitro. But I was reading something that said, well, it's the Shamwow of medications. It cures Marburg. It cures influenza A. It cures COVID. But yet, when they've only tested it in influenza, I think, and it didn't work, even though in vitro it should. So is this all jazz hands that we're seeing based on a report that was, you know, just minimally, that had so many issues with the study design interpretation? I think you could, if it was, if it wasn't in an emergency situation, you would totally blow it off and say that that should, that small report should never have been published.
Yeah, you're talking about the French report?
Yeah.
So I totally agree. I mean, some data there that is great optimism, but there was enough problems with the study, as you just mentioned, that it's really hard to conclude anything. And there's been negative reports from a small study in China. There's been another study in China that maybe shows some benefit. I mean, none of these are the kinds of studies that you or I, anyone on this panel would, you know, would stand up and say, hey, I just did this study, my results. I mean, so I think it's really hard to know. And I write a lot of compounds in vitro that either theoretically should be antiviral or actually have been destined to be antiviral in vitro, yet when they've gone humans, they haven't affect, you know, efficacy. So I think the jury's out. Just like you said, I have a lot of concerns about people using it such that people who are other thing editing it are all your patients. And so I, you know, I definitely support the trials, looking at it, and I think we should look at it, you know, this combination with azithromycin. It's interesting, like I have patients on azithromycin for infectious diseases, and yeah, I, all these people getting refills this week who can't get them. You know, this type of usage without, you know, a lot of data behind it can create some problems.
So the, I don't think anybody has a problem with someone who's actually infected and sick in the ICU getting hydroxychloroquine. I think the issue is giving it to people who you think might could have it or don't have it, or prophylaxis. That's obviously a problem because we're going to run out of this in rheumatology. Let me ask Cassie, do you want to comment on azithromycin? And it seems to be getting more play. And interestingly, out there are comments like, well, given the danger of hydroxychloroquine, what? You know, obviously people have never used it, right? But there are a lot of people who are quickly going to the drug they know, which is azithromycin. So what's your take on that?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question, and there's so many, you know, unanswered issues about this and the hype about the azithromycin Plaquenil combination is from that Marseille study as well. You know, I'm not as excited about the azithromycin in the absence of, you know, a secondary pneumonia. And a lot of the patients that we have admitted to the Cleveland Clinic are getting treated for pneumonia and end up being on azithromycin or doxycycline or others. But mechanistically, I think we need more information to just slap everyone with azithromycin and Plaquenil at this time.
Cassie, do you have a question for anyone?
Yes, I do. I want to ask also Kevin a question. What do you think about this universal masks? This idea, do you think it's a good idea, bad idea?
The idea here being Kevin, there's a policy of universal masking, and does that relate to healthcare workers or even patients? Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, we should get my wife to come back to theirs here, and you could ask her, because four weeks ago, I said, why are all wearing masks? And then I know why we're not all wearing masks, because we don't have enough masks. And that is the reason why that recommendation wasn't made, you know, four or five weeks ago. And that's, it's a huge problem. I mean, the lack of, lack of masks and the ability, the inability to produce them when we need them, you know, it's all been a problem. So that's been the reason why that recognition has not been given. I mean, clearly, look at the data from all these other countries, which we need to do, you know, Singapore looked like they did a good job, and China, you know, we're trying to extrapolate from these other experiences to our country, which I think is hard to do. It's like RCT data from Japan versus RT data in Kansas, you know, totally different experiences. So, but, but, you know, one thing that a lot of Asian countries is mask use. I mean, pretty much universally, all those people wearing masks, it makes sense to wear a mask to me mainly and primarily because people who are infected, either static or asymptomatic, probably are going less efficient spreaders. And that was, you know, four or five weeks ago, why I told my wife, I think we should be wearing masks because we don't really know who's infected and who's not. And I think it would be beneficial. But again, that recommendation wasn't made due to the fact that we didn't have enough masks. So now here we are. We still have enough masks. Now we have foundation. I think it's, you know, I consider now that we don't all need N95 on, you know, in the community, which was not clear, you know, four to six weeks ago or less clear. I think people buy surgical masks or probably protect, you know, you mask, you know, out in the community. I saw by, you know, diminishing spread of virus. So that's kind of my thoughts.
So I wrote about this today in Room Now about the universal mask issue. A key issue is that if it's being used outside the hospital, just don't use, you know, N95 masks. We need those for healthcare workers, but there may be merits to it. Alan, do you have a question for anyone?
Yeah, I'd actually like to ask maybe both of our ID specialists, and this is about a case that came up recently in our office. A patient called with symptoms that were very suggestive of having a COVID-19 infection, and she was not tested because of the lack of ability of testing. And the symptoms have resolved. At what point do you feel comfortable bringing that patient back into the office for her remicade infusion, both for the safety of our staff and also the safety of her getting a remicade infusion?
That's a really good question, and actually one that was discussed in our department yesterday. And I think we might in some way extrapolate from when we say it's okay for an employee to come back to work like a healthcare employee, which would be, you know, three days of no fever without fever-reducing agent, 72 hours, improving symptoms, you know, 14 days from start of symptoms, and if still symptomatic beyond that point, to wear a surgical mask, you know, if they absolutely have to come in for their infusion. And for healthcare workers, they'll get two nasopharyngeal swabs negative 24 hours apart, which I don't think probably is going to be practical for patients, but just going by the deferment criteria and the time from onset of symptoms and then still wearing a mask if they're symptomatic, even though they've improved, is probably.
So a quick follow-up to that is, is that all this evidence that you continue to have virus, documented virus, 14 days, I've even seen 32 days after, after the infection, does the three-day timeframe bother you a little bit?
The, well, it's the three days with no fever plus the, I think for our healthcare workers, it's seven days and improving symptoms. But I have seen that data about persistent, you know, positive virus for many days out, whether that's, you know, viable virus or people can still get infected at that point. We just don't know. But a very good question, and I don't think there's probably a right answer right now.
Yeah, there's no right answer. I mean, the only thing I can ask you, and I think some of those recommendations Cassie mentioned, some of that is geared towards, or it's, look, we're going to have a healthcare shortage, right? And we're willing to probably let healthcare workers get back to work slightly earlier than we are maybe someone who, to get their remicade infusion. So more conservative than that. I mean, we just built through a trial today in terms of, you know, when to let them back in a study to get an infusion. I mean, what I, what I say, and I, again, I'm with Cassie, I don't know that there's a right answer, but if you look at the shedding, yes, it is pretty long. There is data that, you know, shows that the virus is viable in culture after seven days. So even, even people who are shedding, you know, two weeks after, they're probably less likely to be transmitted or to be actually, you know, at risk of getting sick from any remaining virus. So my recommendation at this point, it gets moving target can change next week, but it's resolution of symptoms and then seven days, seven days post-resolution of symptoms. And I think that would be consistent with the viral culture and shade. And, you know, kind of CDC has been reckoning, you know, people in general, that the seven-day period after resolution of symptoms is maybe an important period where people can still be transmitting, so.
Alvin, do you have a question for the group?
Yeah, two quick questions. Artie, first to you. So I had a resident who was going to start April 1st, and we just called him and said, there's no patients, and I need to do the phone call. So we sent him home. It really was nothing to do. So he's doing some stuff inside the hospital. And then Cassie, a quick question for you. So this week, the FDA approved a 15-minute test from Abbott. I knew about the real-time PCR, but how, what's a 15-minute test? I'm trying to figure out how it works, and maybe you can help me out with that. But Artie, your answer first?
So yeah, the training, and Cassie touched on this, that's a big deal. For the students, our students too, they're, they're just been told to stay away. And there's, so there's going to be a gap. We're a little bit more worried for the fellows. Are, you know, they, are they going to finish their fellowship? Those who are supposed to finish in June, is the ACGME going to say, hey, you know what, you haven't been in enough clinics lately, and you didn't do enough of the additional projects that you were meant to do through no fault of their own? So I think this is going to hit fellows a lot more than the residents, because they're too, they're coming to the end of their year. Will they end up with any so-called deficiencies in the things that they needed to do to graduate?
Cassie?
And about that real-time PCR test, I think you're referring to the RT PCR that's going to be, I heard, rolled out at the clinic next week, that is being referred to as real-time, but it's my understanding that this still has to go to the lab and be processed and can be run very quickly, but we won't be getting results for three to four hours because of that transport time. Yeah, right, five days, three to five days. But what's being called real-time is something that's actually going to take a bit more time because it still is not happening at real-time at the bedside, but it's going to the lab and then being resulted.
Okay. Folks, I want to, I think many of you know about the Global Rheumatology Alliance and the registry that's been established in lightning quick time, led by Philip Robinson from University of Queensland and Dr. Yes Danny from UCSF. This thing is up and running, where you, the rheumatologists, are enrolling patients of yours who have been infected or suspected to be infected right now, you know, only operational for a few days. They've got 110 patients enrolled. This is 78% female, 18% over the age of 65, 36% rheumatoids, 17% both with lupus or with psoriatic arthritis. Over 75% of patients that were enrolled were in remission at the time of being enrolled. 35% have been hospitalized. There've been 5% deaths in this group, you know. So it's quite sobering. I think it gets to one of the biggest issues that we're all dealing with. Are our patients really at risk? If our patients were at risk, like everyone has said, you know, the immunosuppressants, those on immunosuppressants, would we see a lot more hospitalizations and problems amongst our patients? I would like to go around the horn and get everybody's quick 30-second impression. Kevin, what do you think?
Well, first of all, the effort's unbelievably important, and I'm so glad they're doing it. And they're going to generate greater data very quickly. I am struck by the paucity, you know, emailing call around the world and some case finding on the ID side similarly, but I am struck by the paucity of reports, people on illogic, naming all your drugs, the paucy of reports types of individuals in the hospital as compared to similarly aged comorbid people in the hospital who don't have those drugs. So I don't, I expect some of these drugs may be a risk and some might not be, and might be protective. Of course, we're going to figure this out in the next month or two. But, but I'm struck by the lack of those folks. And I already asked a question, or maybe you did, you know, how many are these individuals? My read is your patient population, their greatest risk factors right now, are they aged? And their comorbidities, the cardiovascular disease, and they're smoking and their lung disease. I mean, those are probably drawing the hospitalization of those individuals.
So I want to throw out the numbers. I meant to add here before this question, which is, recent reports show that if you're 55 to 70, 64, there's a 1.4% fatality rate with infection. If you're over age 65, and this is all patients, not our patients, if you're over age 65, it goes up to 2.7, almost doubles. If you look at those who have these other comorbidities, a heart disease, chronic lung disease, and diabetes, it seems to be about a threefold increase in really bad things that happen. So those who are hospitalized in the ICU, it's 2% if you don't have those things, 7% if you do have those comorbidities. And there's similar kinds of numbers, but it's very clear for diabetes, heart disease, and lung disease. But I'm questioning, is it so clear for our rheumatic disease patients? Artie?
Yeah, I think that what that highlights nicely, Jack, is the heterogeneity of our patients. And I think we have to do it case by case. We can't even lump a disease. We can't even lump a disease. And you have different diseases, different levels of activity, different treatments. We always forget to mention prednisone, which is, you know, that, that's the bugaboo that I bet at the end of all this is going to show up as something bad. So our patients are just so different one to the other. So I think we really have to individualize the approach as best we can.
Alvin?
So yeah, I mean, based on my, we've got a lot of patients. I mean, in my database, over 13,000 patients, a lot of them, you know, very aggressive with these drugs and I'm just not getting the calls. I'm underwhelmed. And analogy, I tell my patients that when the immune system is preoccupied, causing the inflammation, causing your psoriasis, your arthritis, your lupus, that's the time a viral cell or bacterial cell can wreak havoc. So we tell a lupus patient, you get a fever, I'm treating for infection, but I'm also treating your disease. And that's the kind of the caveat that we see. So right now, we're just not getting it. What we've done, began to do in Epic, we have already set aside, we could actually go through and screen people on my hit list of my top 10 drugs that we think might be a risk. And right now, we're just not seeing anything coming through from the emergency rooms or urgent care.
Alan, you, you have a very large group in, in the DC area. What are you seeing?
Yeah. So unfortunately, just to, I had to put one of my patients on that, on that registry yesterday. And just to give a shout out to the registry, it was extremely easy to use and really well thought out. But I literally have the only case among my 20 partners who has, has a documented case. So that's the anecdotal evidence. We're Maryland and not New York City or California. So I think we'll go in time. But I, I do want to pose another question about whether or not our drugs increase your risk of getting the infection. But once you get the infection, do they change the course of the infection? Are they less likely, for instance, to be on a ventilator or have a disastrous consequence? I wonder whether or not people would weigh in on that one.
Yeah, it seems like this is where the registry is going to come in really helpful in telling us the answer. I don't know that anybody's got enough experience to answer that. Cassie, what's your opinion about this question?
It's a important and great question. And, you know, we think our patients are immunosuppressed. They must be at increased risk for getting this infection. But I don't actually think that we have any, you know, data to suggest that right now. And like Artie said, it's probably more of a individualized, you know, rabbit risk calculator type thing. What else is going on in our patients? Are they on steroids? Do they have chronic lung disease? You know, have they had other serious infectious complications? And, you know, we have a bunch of cases at the Cleveland Clinic so far, two cases to contribute to the, the Global Room Alliance. And we really look forward to the rest of the, the results from that and what we might learn. But I've been, I was interested to see the results from the registry today about the patients who are on Plaquenil, who have, have developed COVID-19. It didn't seem that they, you know, did better or worse than, than anybody else. And today, interestingly, one of our ID pharmacists brought up anecdotal observation that patients with HIV who are getting COVID-19 seem to do okay. And whether that's because of their immune status or because of the medications they're getting, it's like very few numbers, who knows, but lots to think about.
Yes. Fascinating.
So let's go to the questions from our audience. Eugene Fung in Waco asked a question, is there an issue of the timing of hydroxychloroquine use? Is it more like, and how long should it be used for? So it's, our patients are on it all the time, but if someone goes on hydroxychloroquine, what's the course of therapy and should it be given at a certain time? Anybody want to jump on that?
Yeah, I'm. Cassie, if we tell our patient it takes a long time to work for our diseases, but what's the data? How quickly does it work and prevent this exortosidoviral? Does it take months and months or will it work quickly?
We don't even know if it works. So I.
Yeah, I think we, you know, are really anxiously await clinical trials that are going to look at this. You know, it seems, I'm all for, you know, sick patients in the hospital getting Plaquenil. It's a low risk drug. You know, we and our center are giving five days of Plaquenil to patients that are admitted with COVID-19 and they're getting 800 milligrams on day one and, and 400 milligrams for the rest of the four days. But, you know, whether that's the right dose or the right timing to give it, we just, you know, have to stay tuned.
So we have a question from Queensland and that is that they have a lot of talk around, you know, patients who are on biologics or therapy or targeted synthetic DMards or combination DMards are at risk and therefore should not go to work. Artie, what are you telling your patients who are on these therapies? Should they get a pass and not go to work?
Well, I think, I think with the social distancing, where we really are trying to keep the, the exposures down to try to prevent that one person who could be infected from spreading it. And I saw this analysis today, it was very nice about the, the risk of spreading and the number of people you encounter. And it's all about the number of people you encounter. But again, I think it's sort of individual. If the person was working and there's one other person in the office, you know, that's, that's just as good as being at home. If they're, if they're working in a crowded place where they're going to have to be in close contact with people, I think I would say that they maybe should get a pass.
Okay. You know, one of the questions that came up, Kevin, you want to say something on that?
No, I was just going to add, you know, I've been writing a lot of those letters for patients, probably their healthcare workers and they have high conditions and they, you know, they're, they're, they're a nurse and they're worried about working. I wrote one for someone who's a nurse at a nursing home the other day, you know, and you know, they're, they're 70 years old, they have chronic lung disease, diabetes, maybe plus or minus, you know, they probably should not be in clinical situations where they might encounter COVID. So I, I think it's try to redirect those high risk patients to other jobs or, you know, or, or home in that space for, for a while.
Anybody else want to address that?
Yeah, can I chime in? I've had a patient got mad at me because I refused to do the letter. She had to go to work. It was one situation where she couldn't, you know, stay at home. And she was on one of my drugs and she just wrote back to me in Epic, say, hey, if I get sick, it's your fault. And then, so she really got mad at me, but she had no risk factors, asymptomatic. But her boss was requiring she came to work and wanted me to get her off. And I, I didn't, couldn't justify that, but she really got angry.
You know, about 11 days ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, I got a same kind of request. The patient called, said because of this, the patient heard there's going to be a shortage of all drugs because they're all made in China. Can I give her a 90 day supply of all of her medicines? And I came back and said, no, that's goofy. We're not going to do that and whatnot. And I, I had a revelation actually about five days later and I, I was wrong. I think I should have actually spoken to the patient. And I think on one hand, we need to tell our patients whether we think each individual is at risk or not. And they're not necessarily at risk because of these diagnoses or because of these therapies. It's steroids and how old they are and how sick they are. Those are the things that really got a way into this. But I like the Bush administration came up with guidelines for dealing with disasters. And there are some tenets of that guideline started with, you know, being right and being credible. Second was showing respect. Third was patient safety first. And lastly, promote action. So with my patient, I think I should have given them a 90 days prescription and explained to them, I don't think this is going to be a problem, but let's go ahead and do that. Cause you want to be in a partnership here. You want to, you, you want to support people who are really very freaked out about this whole thing and what they're going to do about it. So I, I think sort of siding with the patient as much as we can is going to be important. Of course, patients who are going to stay home, they might lose their job. And I mean, as the whole financial mess that we're dealing with. Alan, are you seeing much of this in your practice?
Yeah, I get these letters every day and, and I am torn. And I think it's very similar to a patient's asking for disability. And, you know, I, I think we're torn because we're torn between, in some cases, healthcare workers that are needed and, and being supportive of our patients. So it is, it does put us in a very difficult position.
It really does. Okay. So how are people handling, we talked about infusions earlier, spacing people out as Dr. Matsumoto said, Alvin Wells talking about using exam rooms as infusion places. Eric Riddeman had a great blog and video on this. What are we not doing? Are we doing prolela injections? And other easy infusions?
So.
That's where the. Sorry, Alan, go ahead.
So the, so things that I, I think can be, can be put off just because of logistical issues such as reclassed and such are, are being, are being put off. The prole injections that used to be given by our nurses are now moved down actually to the doctors, that's the one doctor that's in the office. So they're being given by doctors in private, in private rooms. So some of that is continuing. You know, you know, I, I think initially when this, when this problem broke, we thought about, you know, perhaps just prolonging the infusions. But now that this, this has gone on and there's really no end in sight, I think it's really hard to, to say, look, it just keep on putting off that, that infusion for rheumatoid arthritis. So I think, and when patients are given the choice, I think many of them are choosing to come, to come in. I think our infusion schedule is actually fairly busy.
Artie?
Yeah, I, I think exactly that, you know, you, you, you've a prole and said, well, you could put that off. You don't want to put that off for six months. Absolutely not, because then you start to lose the benefit of it. So when it was a couple of weeks and the, you know, you say, oh, just let's get your power through this month. But now as it gets longer, are, how many of our medicines are, are not important? I don't, I don't know that any of our men, are we using unimportant medicines? No, I think we all use medicines all the time that really do have a role. I don't think we have a lot of unnecessary medicines. So it's really, it's a tough decision to skip them.
So another really tough issue we're dealing with is now we're getting notices from our infusion centers and pharmacies that, sorry, Charlie or Charlene, you're not getting your Actemra infusion. That's on hold. We're saving it for all the might could benefit in people hospitalized with, with COVID and systemic or cytokine storm syndrome. And so it's now going to be unavailable to a lot of our patients. How are we going to handle this? And what's your, do you have a plan for your patients? Cassie, have you dealt with this yet?
Yeah, we have been giving tosilizumab to our sick COVID-19 positive patients in the hospital. And we have set aside a supply for these patients and future patients and kept what is anticipated to be needed for the, you know, CAR T cell patients and then our patients who are already on it. Having said that, our inpatient supply for the COVID-19 patients is dwindling very quickly. In our department, we are, new starts to tosilizumab has been restricted to subcutaneous for now. And I don't actually know if that will parlay, if the need for IV tosilizumab is going to parlay into a shortage of subcutaneous tosilizumab. I'm not entirely sure. And then also, you know, other IL-6 inhibitors, so really a MAB. But we are definitely running into issues with, with the need for tosilizumab, both for our patients and for these, you know, COVID-19 patients, which I'm sure we'll talk about.
There's, where's the MAB?
What did you say? You caught out.
Where's Sarukh MAB when you need it?
Well, we can, we can easily, you know, move people over from the subcu, to the subcu form of this. But the problem is a lot of those patients who are getting these infusions are Medicare and, and there aren't many options for them. So Alvin, did you want to address that?
That was a quick question to say. So we did a call last week with Novartis about the issue. And one of the things they're doing as a company, they're donating 1.3 million doses of tosilizumab around the world for treating these COVID patients. And they say they have enough drug in stock to cover this demand for two years. The drug is made in France and Switzerland, so they're not concerned about the supply. The thing we see in our area now, the IV patients now are going to home infusions. And Jack, you and I had a conversation with one of the companies last week about, hey, will there be a change such that Medicare say, if you have an IV to subcu option, Medicare will need to cover both options. Patients should not have to go to the hospital when you got other options. And I think that's one thing we're going to see change coming out of this crisis.
Alvin, you said that the drug was donated by Novartis. I think you meant Genentech?
I said, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Genentech, yeah, probably.
So Dr. Scopolito sends in a good question about a lupus patient. And, you know, the question is, what do you do with your patients that need to go on new therapies and whatnot? There seems to be a prevailing view by some rheumatologists that let's just not start any new therapy. Let's not start any new hydroxychloroquine. Let's not start any new immunosuppressors right now. Is that a, a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, I think you got it. We just had a patient admitted and we, it was severe lupus, just relatively new. Wanted to give her rituximab, super bad arthritis and cytopenias. And the, the hospitalist said, well, we have to have a negative COVID. And it's, you can't argue, you know, but I said, no, we're absolutely going to treat her. I mean, lupus is, is going to ruin her while we're, we're protecting her from us treating her. And so we, we jumped in and, you know, and got her the treatment. And, but, you know, had to, had to bring those other doctors along.
Anyone else dealt with this?
Yeah, I've had a lot of patients ask, you know, when we're having a discussion about escalating treatment or starting treatment, if now is maybe not a good time to do that. And I've really been trying to avoid making decisions about treatment based on the, the what ifs, you know, not preemptively stopping therapy and not deciding not to start a therapy because of COVID-19. Certainly if someone is, gets sick or symptoms, that's a different story. But I've been trying to not let that guide treatment decisions for patients that need either new therapies or, you know, change in therapy for active disease.
So.
That with the small specialty pharmacies, they actually have it in supply. So I've actually found out from them that one we call, they have 200 doses of hydroxychloroquine in stock. So if you don't have it at Walgreens or CVS, traditional ones, the local specialty pharmacies are one you can reach out where they have some, may probably in stock.
So I, I made a difficult decision recently about putting somebody on rituximab for GPA. And it is absolutely a gut wrenching decision, but I think in, in her particular case, the, the clinical aspects of that disease. And the other thing that I fear is, is that if any of these patients become sick enough that they need hospitalization, they may not be able to have an available hospital bed. And that's frightening.
Yeah, that issue and the other issue is what Artie mentioned. I mean, what, what are the alternatives? And if it's high dose steroids or big steroid tapers, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not excited about that. So.
So a patient has gone through a corona infection and would you start them on a biologic after they supposedly have resolved their infection?
Seven days after they finish. Seven days after stopping having symptoms.
So it's, it's no longer the scarlet letter. It's actually treat them as you would normally treat them. Is anybody worried about the cardiotoxicity of hydroxychloroquine or chloroquine? It seems to be very overstated in the literature. Artie, what do you think?
It's interesting because this has come up twice in the past. Just before COVID, it came up, we had a couple of people in-house with cardiomyopathy and they had both happened to have been on hydroxychloroquine. And it was, they had 12 other reasons for cardiomyopathy. But you can't say that there's no risk. There's some really old literature where back, remember when articles used to be full of histology with arrows pointing at who knows what and, but there's no way to prove it. So in both cases, we end up saying, we have, really don't think that this is contributing at all. But in the bigger picture of things, their diseases were mostly years back, they're rheumatic disease. So we ended up stopping it. So, so now, yeah, when you read stuff, you know, hydroxychloroquine has a whole, there's a whole laundry list of urban legends of things that I don't ever know that it ever caused cardiomyopathy. The anemia, I'm, you know, the, the flare of psoriasis in PSA patients. I think there's a lot of things that, you know, people talk about, I don't, I've never seen.
Let me ask our panelists, let's say you're sick. You've got a fever, 101, you got a cough. Are you starting yourself on hydroxychloroquine? Alan Matsumoto.
Heart failure? What are you, crazy?
So that's a no, Alvin.
Absolutely. Yes. I have some hydroxychloroquine. I have azithromycin. I've got a family to take care of. I've got patients to take care of and a busy practice. So absolutely.
Al, Artie?
Hey, I, I, I think it's not unreasonable, even though I just trashed the data. I don't know that I believe it, but I also just said hydroxychloroquine is so safe.
Kevin?
I just let it up on NSAD, Jack.
Totally dispelling the whole French government's position.
I'm on Losartan for my hypertension and perhaps it's protective. In fact, there's an RCT looking at Losartan. So who, I mean, so many of these ideas. And obviously when you're sick, the downside of many of these ideas is very small. And I think it's not unreasonable to try, try many of these things. So.
Cassie, what would you do?
Oh, take the Plaquenil.
Yeah.
Give me the Plaquenil.
So should rheumatologists be doing inpatient consults?
I'm starting on Monday, so I guess I should be.
Artie, you're on ward service. Uh, what are you doing?
I think we have to. Um, I think you can do as much as you can by looking at the chart, by, uh, you know, looking at all the data that you have available to so easily. But I think we have to.
All right. If we had universal testing, would you test all your patients and would it change your therapy? Alvin?
So Jack, I think I would because just like I'm screening for the varicella titers, I'm looking at their, um, quantiferron. I'm doing whatever I can to make sure their risk factor for getting these diseases is going to be, uh, going to be low. So we, like we say, we don't have the data yet to say if I put them on drug, A, B, C is going to increase that risk. But these patients at some point will be immunosuppressed. They will get respiratory tract infections. And if I can eliminate one other thing and maybe mitigate that, the only caveat now is I don't have a treatment. I don't have it on a vaccine yet. So what I think down the road, we will be shooting everybody with the vaccine once we get one developed.
So let me take a different view and say that I don't really want more information because more information tends to get me more in trouble over time. So, um, I would probably go along with the, the view that maybe we should wait until there's a, a reason to do the test before I would do the test. I think that is the current policy out there, but testing is going to become a bigger and bigger issue. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Well, I, I think, and I'm not gonna, I mean, I hate to do this with, with Cassie and Kevin, but I'm going to bet that when we get, uh, data to show who's been exposed, that it's going to be like 80% of the world. Um, I think all of us have been exposed. So as you said, Jack, you know, you, you get the test, what are you going to do with the result? If you had somebody who never had a fever, never had a cough, and their IgG COVID is positive, their IgM is negative, what do you do? Um, you know, are you gonna, I don't think you're going to treat them differently, but I'd love to see that data.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, I just weigh in that, you know, a serologic, Artie just mentioned, is not commercially available yet. Um, I'm sure there'll be some pretty soon. And, and there will be serologic surveys done, of course, to, to try to come up with the, Artie just guessed at, you know, what, what was the prevalence of this infection when all said and done. But, you know, I, I don't, you know, I think, look, if one, if we had tons of tests and ordering tests in a problem and you could get reliable results back very quickly, I, certainly having, certainly doctors need the ability to test people who are, um, symptomatic, who are, you know, where the differential diagnosis is COVID. And I mean, that thing, act, and that's something now that we're all starting to get. And I think it's important to screening asymptomatic people is very different. And the benefit risk of that is, you know, and, and everything tied to that really depends on the setting. I guess you can make an argument that Alvin was making, that, you know, someone that you're about to be pressed, you do test them, even asymptomatic, sure they don't have it. But we're, we're kind of a long way off from, from that, I think, at this point. Um, because we're, we're testing people who are symptomatic. So, um, we'll have to see where it goes. And, uh, I, I can see that maybe in particular is this on and on and then outbreak lasts for a long time, then eventually you're giving your patients to, it's just like you do things. So.
Cassie, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I completely echo all of that. You know, I think there are so many people probably walking around with COVID-19 with very mild symptoms or some people perhaps without any symptoms that we just don't know about and that, you know, regardless of, you know, separate from making rheumatic treatment decisions, we will not fully understand the, the scope of this virus until we understand how many, how many people have it. So we need to test more people when we're able.
So as we switched over to this remote care sort of model that we're in right now, um, many people have struggled with how to do that. So we did a number of videos with Alvin. Alvin, I think has done four, well, he did Talk at Room Now Live. He did three videos after that. I still get people asking me, we need more information on telemedicine. Uh, there's a question out there, how comfortable are you with doing a telemedicine, uh, or a telephone visit? Um, I want to preface that by saying, I've always said that telephone medicine is risky medicine. It's dangerous. You really need to see the patient to know what to do. But now we're in an era where we're living in danger. So Alvin, how can you lay my fears of making mistakes by doing it all over the phone or by video?
Let me first start with the consult because we work aggressively with that team now. Is so if a hospitalist calls me, uh, Artie, like you said, you saw a patient day with cytopenia and all the other features. Um, the goal would be to have the hospitalers on the line, they're in the room with the patient. I have the patient there and they get me. I'll walk them through the physical exam and it's okay. I'm going to put a couple orders in on Epic and based on that, I'll tell you whether we're going to go steroids or rituximab. Uh, and then that patient, because I don't really need to go to the hospital to see them, expose myself and the rest of my patient with these diseases. Um, the one thing I'm finding, Jack, is that we got to get buy-in from the patients. Um, just like some of my older patients don't like to see the nurse practitioner, the PA, they still want to see me. I had one guy call today. He said, he doesn't want to call from the nurse or the medical assistant. He only wants to talk to me on the phone. So once we have buy-in from our patient, I think this is what one of the changes we're going to see moving forward, that a healthcare system will change. We all, I think, like we said, the old days when you were screening patients, okay, based on these charts, I don't want to see them in a clinic. You don't get reimbursed from that. Take 15 minutes, evaluate that patient. Hey, that back pain and a positive ANA of one to 40, that's not lupus. You don't need to see me. And by the way, I can send off a bill for that. So do those simple things you can do. And the telephone calls I've done this weekend, last week is the, the Medicare patients, hey, I just wanted to check in. I want some reassurance, et cetera, et cetera. Do I need to get my labs? Now, the methotrexate labs, we're forgetting about those. We just follow patients along as we go through. So I think one change we will see is that we will feel comfortable. We got to get buy-in from other doctors. There's some articles out there, the primary care and the hospitals are concerned it's going to put more pressure on them to do the things that they, they, they do. So, but I think we'll see some change and we're trying to work very aggressive with that group to kind of start that mainly with consults.
Anyone else, uh, have experience that they can impart upon the audience with telemedicine?
Yeah, I think, I think, Jack, that, um, that certainly physicians of our generation feel very uncomfortable not being able to do a physical examination because it goes against everything we were taught, everything our mentors taught about the proper evaluation of a patient. But as I'm, as I do more of this, I think it is a skill set. And like any skill set, the more you do, the better you're going to, you're going to, you're going to be. And I think we have to accept that reality.
Agreed. That's really, that's really important. Uh, I'm glad Kevin's able to tune back in because we're getting a lot of questions from the audience. Uh, and maybe Cassie, you want to start with this, but the question is, someone who's been positive, um, uh, and let's say most of these, again, 80% plus are going to be at home and resolve, um, how long before you can resume the biologic therapy that they were previously on? Um, I'm assuming that, that many of us would probably stop that while they're sick. I don't know that I would because the half-life is too long to really stop and it's kind of goofy. But nonetheless, um, you know, there are some people who had, I think were taking objection to what Kevin said earlier about, you know, that, that you can go by a serologies and know, and then know, start right after. But Cassie, how would you handle this?
Yeah, that's a, a tough question as well. And I agree, you know, certain drugs, you know, what is stopping them for a little bit? You've been going to do, but I agree, I would stop, you know, biologics for sure, um, and methotrexate if someone were infected. Um, but I think, you know, after they recover and echo what Kevin said, you know, seven days after, you know, illness is over and symptoms are gone, um, I would probably restart their immunosuppression. If they were completely recovered and doing well.
Kevin, can you defend the, the timing issue?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think again, it kind of goes back to what we were saying before. It's consistent with, you know, the viral shedding data in terms of the viral culture data in association with shedding, you know, after, after seven days, the virus becomes a lot less, uh, vile. It appears, so, you know, CDC's guidance has been kind of around this symptoms resolve, seven more days, and then you're pretty unlikely to be transmitting and likely, unlikely to be, um, at risk for infection. I think, you know, I don't, I think if someone's symptoms resolve, I mean, the chance that they're shedding at that point, uh, is very high. They could still be infectious. Um, and again, I, I think that seven day period is the buffer where, where that, that goes away. So, you know, how's that translate to when it's okay to give them a biologic again or their next dose? Um, it may be fine to do it in that seven days. I mean, they, they not at risk getting sick, but it might prolong their shedding potentially. We don't know the answer to that question. So for right now, I'm still kind of stuck on this seven days post-symptom resolution.
So let me give you a case from Dr. Lester. This is a psoriatic arthritis case who, um, was off of Humira, um, since January for a total knee replacement. Soon after, the patient tested positive for SARS-CoV-2, uh, after they developed symptoms of shortness of breath and low-grade fever, having been exposed to someone from Brooklyn figures. Um, and, and then two days into the illness, remind you that they stopped their Humira back in, uh, January, the patient's doing horribly worse with, uh, their skin and joint disease exploded. So now the patient could barely get out of bed with excruciating pain. The skin is horrible. Wish we could have used a biologic. What should I do? Can't use steroids. I don't know that I ever would have stopped the, the, the TNF inhibitor because you have this infection. If you're in the ICU, you can stop it, but that's stopping it on paper because you're not getting rid of it. It's still there. There's no negative reports about what TNF is doing in these situations. Um, so I don't, until we know better, I would not stop it. And obviously the practice of stopping the Humira for, you know, two or three months surrounding a knee replacement is sort of idiotic and, and should never happen. Um, anyone else have some advice for Dr. Lester on how to manage this case of psoriatic arthritis?
The patient was asymptomatic, Jack, or?
Uh, the patient had symptoms of, of low-grade fevers and cough, uh, and aches, but then, uh, because they were already off of the Humira and a lume, their skin and joints got a whole lot worse. Probably has nothing to do with the timing of the, of the, the, uh, COVID infection, but it's obviously confusing the issue.
I think it gets back to what Alvin was saying before. Uh, you, you have a person who's going to be sick and bad things are going to happen from the extent of skin involvement, from the immobility. So, uh, with this in, this type of, but now if you had TB, yeah, no more TNF inhibitor. But for this infection, I think getting back on the TNF inhibitor seems to be the, the best alternative.
Let me throw out another thing. What about the JAK inhibitors? You know, the article in the Lancet saying that maybe hey, they've identified, maybe one of the JAK inhibitors might prevent these, um, um, blocking the receptor on the long epithelial cells prevents infection. So one of the ID guys want to weigh in on that. What about a JAK in that case?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And, you know, JAK inhibitors and their effect, downstream effects on, on IL-6, um, I know are being considered as, uh, for treatment of COVID-19. And yeah, maybe put that person on, on a, a IL-6 inhibitor, a JAK inhibitor.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think so baricitinib is the one JAK that theoretically would prevent infection, right? By inhibiting the ADP2 kinase system. And again, it's theoretical, but there's other drugs like that, uh, as well as Sartan. There's a whole list of them from that Lancet article you mentioned. Um, I don't think the other JAKs have that ability. I mean, all the JAKs share that ability of, um, you know, potentially being helpful in treating cytokine storm and downregulating IL-6 responses. And so, you know, it probably depends on when you're using it, but it's really those two-step concepts we were talking about before. I mean, there's a concept of, you know, preventing action or preventing worsening if you're infected. And then there's that concept of, you know, um, you know, well, the latter really preventing badness, you know, if you've been infected. So some of these may work in one concept, not the other, uh, or maybe beneficial in one concept, not the other. We just, we're going to have to sort that out with studies. And, you know, there, there's a number of trials, as you guys know, looking at, uh, six inhibitors, but there's others being manned with other anti-inflammatory drugs as well. So.
So there are a few questions in here that I'll turn into comments. Um, are chronic Plaquenil patients protected? We don't know the answer to that. We're waiting for the results of the Global Rheumatology Alliance Registry to answer that question. Um, another doctor says, out of an abundance of precaution, we've implemented a policy of screening patients the day before they arrive for scheduled infusions. Seems like a good idea to ask them questions about infu infections and symptoms. Screening them by testing would make no sense at all, um, at this point. Um, I want to ask the panel a few questions about steroids. What dose of steroids would they consider their patient to be immunosuppressed? Artie?
Uh, 20 and above for sure. Uh, five and below, I don't think so. In between is the tricky part for me.
Anyone else have a, who can top that?
One milligram.
Yeah.
No, I, the thing, caveat is the older, thin, caca person who's on seven and a half milligrams, that's still a risk in that individual. Um, so, but that's what Artie said, that's the gray zone that we really don't know.
Yeah, I would weigh in that there's a gray zone. Um, but you know, if you look at the infection data and you look at vaccine data, you, you don't like, for vaccines, for example, you don't see a whole lot of action with prednisone five a day in terms of minimizing vaccine responses. You, you start to see that action kind of 7.5-ish but above that. So I, you know, I, I'm kind of with Artie. I'm, I'm more of a 15 guy or 10 or 15. And, you know, once you hit that and go above, I, I'm much more worried.
I echo that 10 to 15 window, um, but it also depends, you know, on the, on the patient and, and the duration of the glucocorticoids and their comorbidities, but that 10 to 15.
Um, our buddy and father, Lenny Calabrese makes a comment that, um, uh, hydroxychloroquine studied in HIV eight years ago, found that immune activation decreased, but viral load increased. And that also another study of prophylactic hydroxychloroquine, uh, exacerbates chicken gunya, um, begs the question about how we use this, where we use this and the timing that we use hydroxychloroquine. Artie brought up that point earlier as well. Anybody have any comment about those particular studies? Kevin, are you aware of those studies?
Um, yeah, I am aware of them. And there's also the study Artie mentioned with influenza A. So, um, ob- obviously all viruses are different. Uh, I mean, flu, flu A, you know, upregulates different, uh, different cytokines. It behaves totally differently in some ways than this coronavirus. So, you know, it's hard to extrapolate between vi- different viruses and these different studies. But clearly, I mean, I think the, the studies mentioned, I mean, highlight the, the issue here that we just, we, we don't know if this drug works or a lot of these other drugs work until we test them. So.
So there's a, a question about new patients. What are your policies for those of you run rheumatology clinics? What are your, so Kevin, take a breather on this one. Uh, what are your, what are your policies on seeing new patients? Alan Matsumoto, are you seeing them?
We are. Um, I, I think there was some trepidation by some of us, but we are, we are seeing patients.
Remotely or alive?
Uh, I'm sorry, by, um, so if they're, if they are truly an urgent emergent patient, uh, we do have a skeleton staff that will see the patient, but we are seeing patients by, by telemedicine, new patients by telemedicine as well. Um, and we're just doing the best we can, uh, getting as much old records as possible prior to the visit. Um, and, uh, uh, and, and, and being somewhat circumspect about, with patients about the fact that we sometimes can't make a definitive diagnosis at that time and that they will need follow-up with us at some point.
Um, anybody else want to weigh in on that? Alvin, what are you doing?
The same type of thing, really only cute. Like I said, the one vasculitis patient I had to come in today. The challenge in part, Jack, even if I see them today, I can't get x-rays, I can't get blood work, I can't get an MRI. I think Artie touched on this. I mean, everything else is shut down. So I'm stamping them out with a little bit of Medrol dose pack and, and like today, we started some hydroxychloroquine on the patient. But we are seeing the, but, um, everybody else is just remotely and all the positive ANAs, joint pain, arthritis, positive rheumatoid factors, they're being seen after the summer, maybe in the early, early fall. So.
We, we need to see people though. I mean, there's a, there, we can't punish the patients. Um, and they need our, our expertise. And, and as Alan said, I think we're learning. Alvin would be proud of me yesterday. I had this lady on the video pinching her skin. And I was like, what the hell am I doing? Like that, exactly. And now go down the finger and show me. We're all learning.
Very good. That is true. So what's happening, many of you do clinical trials. What's happening to clinical trials right now? This is a disastrous kind of development. Um, Artie, you do lots of clinical trials. What, what's the story?
Oh, it's, it's almost grown to a halt. Um, we've done some video visits every, it's way out of the window. I think there's going to have to be tremendous understanding at the agency that, uh, there's going to be nothing but violations. Uh, you know, the trials are so strict about the, the, when you have to do certain things. And yet the university is saying that they're treating it, I don't want to say that they're treating it as optional, but they're not treating it as urgent. Um, so they're really saying, you know, you, your staff ought to be minimally, they can work from home all they want, but they ought to minimally be there, which means you can't really do a lot.
Yeah, Artie, you're saying the same thing. I'm involved in 13 clinical trials. Yeah, Artie is saying thing. I'm involved in 13 clinical trials. My study coordinators are home. They're not even allowed to come into the clinic and everything's been put on hold. So I'm, I'm getting all these letters and things like this, but it's just a total nightmare.
I, I think the companies are gonna have to renegotiate endpoints with the uh, with the regulatory agencies and maybe interim uh analyses are gonna have to suffice because, I mean, these are billions of dollars that are, that are going, you know, circling the drain right now.
Uh, you know, just to add to that, I, I was involved in a discussion today of uh, with the protocol that's being halted temporarily to new enrollment. But uh, for the people that are in the, are, you know, currently on study drug and I encourage the sponsor to very quickly do a validation study to figure out how to validate your primary outcome measure virtually. And I think it might be possible, but I think we're gonna have to start doing these things because, because we're gonna run into these problems. We're not gonna be able to measure what we want to measure. Some of these patients, we're gonna have a lot of missing data. Uh, I think there's, you know, I echo just what Artie and said. I mean, we're, all the institutions kind of ground are halt. And I think most sponsors have stopped enrollment of most trials and it's kind of moot point anyway, because you can't, you couldn't get anyone to come into your clinic to enroll anyway, so.
Yeah. So I think for us, because we're, uh, we're, uh, we're not associated with the university, we are uh trying very hard to um at least maintain some of the, uh, some of the study visits and uh i- it's, it's just a really a shame if you have to stop a study, a study medication because you just kind of totally, fully lose all of that, all of that data. Uh, but certainly there have been no new patients that have been entered into those studies.
All right. I got a few more questions that I want to end. Uh, is anybody having a, a right now, a hard time getting placental for their patients? If so, raise your hand. Or not? Variable.
Patients, yes, some patients, no.
So again, we're all predicting the big time shortage. It hasn't quite yet happened, but it's, it's still worrisome that it's going to happen. Um, someone asked about viral loads or viral loads at all important here in man, um, following patients or managing patients, Cassie?
Um, I know that's been looked at in, you know, a bunch of the, some of the observational studies that have been done. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think we've, I don't know a whole lot about the, the role of the viral load um in management. Um, I'd imagine it correlates with, you know, somewhat with severity of illness, but I'm not entirely sure. Kevin?
Um, the answer is no, because I, first of all, you know, it's, I think the amount of viremia in these patients is quite low. And I mean, if you're gonna do a viral load, it's off a blood sample. I, I don't know how you do a viral load off a nasal swab, you know? The more you swab, the more virus you get. I don't know. So, you know, the, there really hasn't been ability to look at uh quantitative viral loads in blood. There, I mean, there has been some data like Cassie said and from China, but, but again, uh, the percentage of people who are viremic is actually quite low.
So in your clinics, are you having, the patients who come in? Are you having all patients wear masks? Are you having your staff wear masks? Are you wearing masks? Let's go around the horn. Cassie?
This is probably different by institution protocol, but at the Cleveland Clinic, um, we are, patients are getting screened at every door for symptoms, respiratory symptoms. Um, and if they have them, if they have a cough, then they are wearing a mask. Um, and employees are all being temperature screened um every time they enter the building. Um, so patients with symptoms are having masks placed. Some, certainly patients who want to bring in their own mask from home and wear it in clinic. We've seen several of those. Um, but in general, um, our healthcare providers in the clinic setting are not wearing masks prophylactically unless they have respiratory symptoms.
Kevin?
Yeah, you know, about three weeks ago, myself, my staff made the decision that we were masking with every patient coming through. And any patient with respiratory symptoms was also given a mask. Uh, as Cassie said, um, we did not have enough masks, non, um, you know, or asymptomatic people uh masks. So, so we started doing that three weeks ago. Now, that was just my clinic. Now, of course, on a chronic chest infection clinic, it's a little bit different. Uh, everybody's coughing. We don't know who the heck has what. But our university as of uh three days ago went full-on mask policy for every healthcare worker, no matter where they are, uh, in any patient contact setting. So again, for patients, we don't have enough masks to give everyone masks, but we're giving masks to people who have respiratory symptoms.
Artie?
Say, uh, pretty much same as Cassie. Uh, and, but you know, who knows what it'll be like tomorrow.
Right.
Alan, what are you doing in your outpatient practice?
Very similarly uh to, to Kevin. So, um, everybody's screening at the door. Um, they ask the questions. Have you been in contact with anybody? Have you been traveling? Do you have any symptoms? And everybody gets their temperature down in the ear. They have to get a tag saying they had been screened before coming in, even the UPS guy before delivering something. And also we have a policy, any physician who's in contact with a patient has to have a mask on in the hospital, in the clinics. But everybody's screened and all providers are wearing masks in, in a patient or action.
Alan?
So unfortunately, uh, we just do not have the masks or, or certainly not the PPEs uh that's necessary. Certainly not, not even for our staff and certainly not to be able to give uh to, to patients. Uh, what we had a long discussion about this morning is whether or not we would request patients to wear uh some sort of covering over their mouth and nose, um, informal covering over their mouth and nose. And we would suggest that or even require that. Uh, we decided to hold off on that until we see the, the formal CDC recommendations. But I think probably uh patients uh will probably be encouraged to wear some sort of covering over their mouth and nose uh when they come in to see us.
So in this era of shortage, can masks be reused? Kevin, Cassie, what do you, what, what's one of the rules?
I'll just say it, it's been pursued because for weeks we've been, you know, one mask a day. And um, we're encouraged to actually use a mask every day and try to do it as long as, and we have a little plastic bag with an, or a paper bag with him on it. You know, that we're supposed to stick it in and try not to like get any contamination anywhere and then pull it out the next day and wear it. So, um, our, our institute is using a, um, as of a few days ago, I mean, we, I spent, you know, a couple of weeks helping people troubleshoot that problem. And we were looking at U systems, we were looking at ozone systems, ways to decontaminate our masks, actually most, taking them off and wiping them with the Oxivier wipes and sticking them in our bag. I mean, that's what we were doing. Um, but we just started using a, um, a system that is an ozinator. Uh, and I know Nebraska kind of pioneered some UV system. Uh, people are kind of doing one or the other, I think. Cassie, what are you guys doing?
Yeah, it seems when necessary that everything can be reused. Um, the, our institution just started kind of collecting um PPE um for being reused. And there was this um company in, in Ohio, I forget their name, that's come up with one of these technologies for disinfecting um N95s that I think use aerosolized um hydrogen peroxide that we're gonna start using next week. I've heard about the UV. I was talking with one of our, our immunologists at our sister hospital, um, who had some reservations about UV for like fabric masks, because there might be like shadows from the, the creases and that that might not be the best idea. But, but we are um going to be using these various technologies to reuse um face masks and other PPE.
Yeah, you know, I microed a couple of them. It didn't, didn't turn out so well.
Like on fire.
So I want to remind the uh, uh panelists and audience that Artie Kavanaugh published a paper a few years ago on patient self-joint exams. So it must be worthwhile. Um, Artie, um, are you doing the Alvin joint exam where you're having the patient do this and then this and then this and up and down and shoulders out? Or are you doing the, something different?
A little bit of both. I mean, you do the prayer sign for some people. Um, there's a lot of things that you can do. The patients are of course very good at telling you what joints are tender. They're not as good about swollen and they were never, uh, they never um could distinguish necessarily bony swelling from gushy synovial swelling. So there's just no substitute for that. I think that Alvin may uh tell us, you know, maybe in a couple of years, we could, uh, they can each have their own ultrasound attached to their own iPhone. Um, and then, you know, then uh we could do it all remotely maybe. But uh, yeah, and they know it, it's another thing that we're learning. Um, really dependent on the patient-reported outcomes.
Artie, we're working on the.
Go ahead, Alvin.
Say it again?
Well, what have you learned about the, the video joint exam, especially with more intense use than last week?
So yeah, so now as I kind of researched the world literature, like the one thing we said, you know, the making, inability to make a fist is a for early sign of tinosynovitis. Uh, so all those things we're beginning to see. And I still look for that little Chris in between the MCPs. If I can't see that little groove, that's a sign. Hey, they have some puffiness there. Now, the whole mechanics hand, these whole robust guys, arthritis robustus, all that stuff is the issue. But I'm putting that together with my blood work, my x-rays and all those other kind of things. So like Alan Matsumoto said, we, we can put our foot in the waters and as we learn this, we're gonna hate tweak things. We might even do some other clinical studies to say, hey, this is what we're finding out. But I think people really gotta dive into this instead of sitting back and just waiting to see what's gonna happen.
So there is in all the questions, and by the way, we've got over 150 questions. We're not gonna get to all of them. We're gonna end with this last question. Uh, and we'll try to answer the other ones, maybe online on room now. But the, one of the overwhelming questions we keep getting is I'm getting inundated with requests to write letters. I told you what my policy was. And again, these are letters for patient, your patients, families of people, but what, do you have a policy? Tell me what your policy is on writing letters for patients about their condition, where they should go to work. Um, who wants to start with that? Alan Matsumoto.
Go ahead, Alan. You go.
Yeah, ag- again, as I, as I talked about, that's, that, that is, that is a very difficult uh situation that, that we're placed in. Um, some cases, it's, it's, uh, it's clearer than others when they're, um, when they're, when they're on immunosuppressive medicines and they're in high-risk uh situations. Um, and, um, you know, I, I think I generally have a short telephone conversation with them. I express my, uh, my concerns that they don't, they are not really uh immunosuppressed and that there's, and the lack of data that we have. Um, but for the most part, um, you know, it's, it's, it is extremely difficult to pass those kinds of value judgments for, for, for somebody else. And, and, and ultimately, I think we have to respect that.
Artie, you have a different view?
No, it's, it's, it's individual. It depends on, you know, all those factors that, you know, I said, they all, so many things go into it. There's no, there's no standard letter. I don't, I'm not finding. Everybody's a little bit different.
Definitely not a standard letter. Um, I have written a lot of letters um for stating it's medically, I feel it's medically necessary for a patient to work from home if possible. And I'm 100% supportive of that. Whoever can work from home should work from home. But as far as the being off-work question, that can be difficult on case-by-case basis. And as was mentioned before, you know, patients perhaps, you know, that are heavily immunosuppressed or immunosuppressed and are working in nursing homes. Or, you know, I happen to have a patient um who's on a biologic and was supposed to man our COVID ward in the hospital. You know, certain, perhaps she should work on another floor. Um, but everyone's different and it's, it's tough. There's no one solution.
Kevin, last word on that?
Yeah, I don't know that I can add to what they all said. I, I agree. But I, I do think that, you know, modifying people's work who are at high risk for complications uh is important. And I, I think that's a risk for just that, that you should explore individual patients, so.
I want to thank our panelists, Alan Matsumoto, Alvin Wells, Artie Kavanaugh, Kevin Winthrop and Cassie Calabrese for participating in this great town, town hall. Um, this is gonna be the first of weekly meetings on Room Now. We're gonna start with Tuesday night Rheumatology. If you signed up for this, you can sign up for that. We're doing grand rounds every week. Um, at this time, little intro, half-hour lecture, a lot of questions. We'll get to some of your COVID questions in the future, but next week, Room Grand Rounds, Tuesday Night Rheumatology, the safety biologics with me lecturing, unfortunately. But there'll be other great speakers. Uh, again, thanks to everyone. Uh, tell your friends. This will be on Room Now uh and on YouTube for viewing as of tomorrow. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
For having us.
Thank you.